Thank you. Good afternoon, I'd like to welcome you to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. It is Monday, April 18th, 2022, and I hope you've mailed your taxes because they are due today and your first estimated tax payment, so. Such a, I know, and it's not the 15th, good news. Anyway.
What's a CPA, always a CPA?
Well, I was listening to, I was like, oh my gosh. Anyway, please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, I believe Ed Keith, would you like to join us?
Good morning Commissioners, Ed Keith, County Forester. Today I have an item on the agenda for a request to apply for a grant. The grant is offered by the Bureau of Land Management, it's called a Community Assistance Grant. Those grants are typically focused on fuels reduction, adjacent to federal lands, in this case it happens to be adjacency to BLM lands. In the past, we have applied for these with adjacency to Forest Service lands, but the BLM does have a grant opportunity open that closes next week. I am proposing that we apply for about $250,000 in funds. Community Assistance Grants typically run about three years. Sometimes they're funded an initial amount the first year and then some of that funding falls in the next year or two. There is no match for this grant, although we may explore some landowner match, and of course, we usually provide our own, you know, labor for, you know, planning the projects and implementing the projects, we provide that, but there is no actual match that's required to apply for the grant. So we would be looking at fuel reduction on private lands that have some benefit or adjacency to these BLM lands. And of course, we have BLM lands scattered throughout a lot of the county. Some of the lands that we're looking at, if we were successful in this particular grant would be, one of the focal areas at least, would be focused in the Lower Bridge area, the area that's kind of between Terrebonne and Sisters and off the Lower Bridge Road area, has a lot of interest lately from private landowners that are looking at reducing their risk. They have also just formed a Range Land Fire Protection Association, but are looking at other ways to reduce their risk through fuels reduction. There's some, also concentration of BLM lands in the greater Lapine area, and of course, a lot of lands further east in the Brothers Hampton area, but I think we'd be focused more on those more populated lands in either the greater Lapine area or the lower bridge area. It's just kind of a general area focus. Have done a little bit of outreach to landowners just to gauge interest, it looks like we have more than enough interest in doing projects to utilize some of these funds and generally just looking at, you know, in a lot of cases, you know, typical fuel reduction, thinning trees, reducing brush, those sorts of things, so. That's a general overview of the grant, I'd be happy to answer any questions or...
Thank you so much for mentioning the Lower Bridge area, because after the Grandview Fire last year, I know that that neighborhood is really in need of more work, so this is great.
Certainly.
If we're so fortunate, and then I know Lapine has their own special issues, so truly. How soon will we know then, if we're awarded?
So the grant closes next week. My understanding is that they have a pretty short review process, so I would expect that we would hear probably within 30 days or so, maybe May, sometime in May.
Oh, great, so this is work that actually could be done then this year, started this year?
I would expect it would start this year.
Okay, thank you, Ed, and thank you for going to China Hut and educating the neighborhood on fire safety. And are you going to let us know what are the fire free dates?
Ah, well, they're coming up, I would say they're variable depending on where you're located in the county, not having them written out, I would say go to firefree.org and look at the events page for the events nearest you. Of course, we start with not landfill, and that'll run for a couple weeks, including the weekends, and then we shift that to the transfer stations later in May, running into the, I believe, the first weekend in June. But for all the operating hours and things like that, I would say just go to the website to look for all those particular details of when those transfer stations are open or closed, depending on the solid waste schedule.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions?
And are these funds exclusively for implementation of work, or will some of the, the kind of coordination, technical assistance, project development type work that I'm sure you'll need to do to line up, line up work sites, will that be covered as well?
Yeah. I believe it can cover costs for planning and implement, or, you know, getting the projects to the actual reducing of fuels. Typically, we've provided that, which mostly includes our staff time, because we already have that budgeted, we typically try to focus the utilization of the funds on going to the actual projects through the contractor, so that's, that's kind of the way I'd be planning it, just to try to maximize the amount of acres that are actually treated.
Yeah, yeah, and do you, do you think you will be able to ask landowners to do some cost share for, for this work?
We, we usually try to do that as much as possible, it kind of depends on each landowner's actual capacity to do so. So what we find if we have a really high percentage of cost share is the people that have, that are, the more affluent folks that have a lot of funding available tend to be able to participate, and it leaves out others, so I try to avoid setting kind of a hard and fast, you have to have like 50% match or 75% match, if it doesn't come along with the actual funding, so. In talking to, just kind of scoping out who would be interested, though, it does sound like that there are several landowners that would have the capacity to contribute, you know, equipment time, or some of their own labor to try to make the dollars go farther. I don't have the exact, we wouldn't build that, you know, a percent match into the grant, since it's not required, but we would work with landowners to try to get those contributions to make the dollars go farther, and, and to also show that they're actually invested in the work, because typically if we do all the work for people, they're not quite as invested as if they're supplying some of their own labor, so we, we usually try to, you know, require that kind of what we'd call sweat equity investment in people doing at least a portion of the work.
Great, thank you.
These dollars all be on private lands then?
Yes.
Yeah, nothing?
I would say at least non-federal land, I, it definitely can't be spent on federal land, so if there's other lands that I'm not thinking of, but for example, you know, if we were to work in the Lapine area, and the city of Lapine had, you know, a small, small parcel that they want to do next to community or something like that, it may be something that would not be private, but it might be a park district or a local jurisdiction.
Great, and then how do these money flow? So this will be federal dollars coming into Deschutes County under your budget, and then just, yeah, plugging into all kind of the, all the efforts we're already doing, the Project Wildfire Community Event.
Correct, yeah, typically what we do is work with the landowner to identify that actual project, what portion of the project that they would be able to do, and then, and then the portion that we expend is typically through our pool of contractors, so we bid those out on a competitive basis to our contractor pool, and then execute those when the project's ready to go.
We're in a good spot to be able to plug those dollars into our ongoing projects, just a little bit different focus area for the dollars intentions.
Correct.
That's great.
So, Ed, could we spend all the money this year? Is there a requirement that we spread it out over three years?
There's not necessarily a requirement to spread it out over three years, my understanding, though, is that the BLM, in talking to the BLM, they have a certain amount of dollars that would be available this year, so they, they might, you know, if we requested 250 or more thousand dollars, they might not have that all for this budget year, so. I do understand, in just the landowners that I've talked to, that we have more than enough acres, so the interest is there to do, we could potentially do it all in a fairly short period of time, but I don't know that the funds are all going to flow in at, you know, at the very start, start, starting date of the grant.
I know, right in the middle of McKenzie Canyon, I was trying to help a homeowner get access, another access out, you know, just because of where the fire starts, and if it starts right at the, the T of their intersection, up off of McKenzie Canyon, it's, it could be really frightening for that group of neighbors, so haven't been successful to date, but I'm, you know, I had a lot of good conversations with the BLM people that were trying to implement that additional, you know, escape route.
Sure.
Remember how we looked at Tollgate and Sundance, and, you know, we have these communities, and truly, if they only have one access out, it could be really problematic, so hopefully the cleanup will really help that community.
Yeah, the, the hope would be, you know, of course, with any of these fuel reduction projects, we're hoping to reduce the fire behavior to the point where suppression could be more safe for firefighters, and, and that they can be more successful because the, you know, the fire behavior is reduced to the point where it's, you know, feasible to stop a fire with, just with firefighters on the ground, as opposed to calling in a bunch of extra aviation resources or additional equipment, so that's, the ultimate goal is to, you know, have a place where fire behavior is going to be reduced, and suppression can be more successful, and it's safer for everybody that lives there.
Do you know what the date is when people can no longer do their private burning on their property? Do we have that date? Because I was talking to someone this morning, and they were thinking it's soon.
That date hasn't been set yet, it, it does fluctuate a little bit year to year, depending on the weather conditions, so if you would have asked me a couple weeks ago, I would have said it's really imminent, and with this weather that we've been getting, I think that's bought us a little bit more time, but it typically goes into effect sometime mid-May to, it's pretty rare for it to extend past about the first of June, again, just kind of depending on when the weather really starts to get longer stretches of warmer, drier weather.
I did some, I did some weeds pulling, and boy, the ground was really wet, and then we had massive snow on Saturday, and of course, then we had massive sun, like a couple hours later, so.
We have 90% chances of rain tomorrow, so.
I know, I know, thank goodness, so.
So, Ed, is this, is this grant program new to us, or?
The, this particular opportunity through the BLM hasn't been offered for a number of years. There had been, one of our more reliable sources of grant funding over the years was community assistance, it typically had flowed through the Forest Service, so we had applied to them for a number of years. The Forest Service in Oregon then decided that that, that funding was going to flow directly to the Oregon Department of Forestry, and so other local governments couldn't apply for it for a number of years, and then this year the BLM came up, out with the opportunity that was, I wouldn't say it's the first time we've applied, but it's probably been eight to 10 years.
Wow, interesting, so, so is this, is this a program that used to be connected to the National Fire Plan, maybe?
Yeah, yes, it was, yep.
Interesting.
Yeah, basically a way for the Forest Service and the BLM to offer funds essentially to communities, you know, through local governments and other, you know, municipalities that were adjacent to federal lands, and that funding has definitely fluctuated over the years, or, or has either come down through the Forest or, or the BLM.
Right.
I don't know what particularly changed this year that the BLM offered this up, and the Prineville District, which manages the, the area, and, you know, has the Deschutes Resource Area, you know, reached out to us to let us know that it was an opportunity that just hadn't been in place for a few years, so.
Great, well, whatever, whatever it was, I'm glad it happened.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the request to apply for a BLM Community Assistance Grant.
Now, second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBohn?
Yes.
And the Chair of Justice?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed, for joining us. Item number two, Elections Modernization Grant, yes, timely arrival.
Here I thought it was early.
Wow. You, right on time. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Good afternoon Commissioners, so the state has presented all Oregon counties, county clerks' offices with a grant for elections, election modernization, as an election modernization fund, they've offered us $15,000. There are some, some do's and don'ts associated with that, it's to be spent on things such as updating voting machines, about purchasing ballot drop boxes, video surveillance, and things like, you know, things like that. What it's not to be used for is any, any ongoing subscriptions, such as automatic signature verification and things like that, but other than that, it's to be spent by the end of next fiscal year, FY23, and we are to just give a justification or an itemized list and report to the state of what we spend the money on. Some, some things that I'd like to purchase would be additional drop boxes as spares, and as we're rolling out new Dropbox locations, and then an ADA compliant voting device where, whereas a, yeah, and a voter can vote unassisted on a compliant terminal that is associated with our current voting system. In a nutshell, that's pretty much it, there's not, not a lot of strings attached to it, it's just to be used for our elections modernization.
Steve, when you say ADA compliant voting device, does that mean some, a place that would be easy for someone, accessible for someone to drop off their ballot, or to act, to actually fill out their ballot?
Actually, completely, thank, thank you Commissioner, yes, it's actually to assist them in completing their ballot, so right now, the, the state has a, you know, somebody could log on to Oregonvotes.gov and access their ballot and vote it, or download it, and if you had a screen reading device or something like that, you could utilize that type of ballot, and then print it out and cast it, but if somebody comes into our office, we have tablets and old, some old inkjet printers and things like that, that we, that the state had given us years and years ago, that kind of cobbled together a countertop solution or a counter solution, where as somebody comes in and says, I, I can't fill out my ballot on my own, can you help me with this? So we do have something already in place, but it's, it's a little bit different, and then we would have to either, it doesn't scan directly into our voting system, but this solution that our, our Elections Technology vendor Clear Ballot offers would allow somebody to use that, say, it's similar, it's a tablet, you know, you could insert, or have any different, multiple inputs, you know, gel switches, and sip and puff, and things like that, navigate the ballot, mark the ballot, print out a marked ballot, which is then, it could be scanned directly into our voting system. Thanks, I didn't describe that, yeah, thanks.
Oh, that's great, thanks.
Is there any other capital projects that you would schedule with the revenue of the office, or is this, is this kind of the only way you'd get money for this?
It's, it's a one-time, it's a one-time deal, yeah, there's, there's nothing else that I can think of that we would be using this on, maybe something associated with, again, our tabulation system, coming down the road would potentially be things like ranked choice voting, or possibly, you know, other.
If there's big changes in.
Big changes, we could use some of this money toward it, but to be honest, some of the, I mean, one of the bigger things coming down the road is, that we've discussed is our, our space needs and our space issues, and I don't, I don't foresee any of this money being spent on anything that related, related to that, as we're currently under this space study.
Right.
Is every county?
$15,000 is probably not going to help too much.
It wouldn't go too far, yeah, it wouldn't go too far.
Might buy a door. Every county got the same amount?
No, each county got a minimum of $15,000, so some counties had a more dire need for things like, to replace their entire voting system, which we did just five years ago, their, their, their tabulation system. Other counties may have not had a ballot sorter and other technology like that, so they had put in for those larger ticket items. If we had the space, I would have, I would have put in a request for a second sorter, we need a redundancy there, some, some, some sort of backup, but as you know, our, our space needs up there, we, we can't fit a second sorter in that area, even, even with the smaller footprint versions that are out there, so some, some of the counties did put in larger requests, and we're, we're receiving the minimum.
So this is the $15,000 grant then?
It is.
So, yeah, I'll move acceptance of $15,000 from Secretary of State for election modernization.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeBohn?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of Justice?
One question I do want to ask, now that we're, we're through the vote, is about our, our grant approval policy, and now, is this a small enough grant that, that this was actually within Steve's discretion or just handle directly, or?
This could have been approved by the county administrator had that G820 policy been in place at the time all this paperwork got started, but it, it wasn't.
Got it.
But this would be one, and Eric and I are working on the tracking system, so that the ones that go through that way would be visible to the board on a monthly basis.
Yeah, I mean.
Good to know.
It's great to know about this, you know, I'm, I'm glad to know that, that, you know, these funds are coming, and that you'll be able to do some good things with it, but, you know, in the future, we don't necessarily have to take up a bunch of your time and, and more time to, to run through it.
Yeah, apologies if it shouldn't have been on the, on the agenda.
Oh, no.
But, yeah, I'm, receiving grants is, is certainly new to me, I wanted to make sure that we went through the.
Hmm, no apologies, we're still trying to figure this, you know, get this whole grant, grant review process pinned down.
I think the plan was to roll that out at the next department head meeting, and, which is pretty soon, I believe.
Yeah, oh, one more thing about it, too, it will be received after, in fiscal year 23, probably early on, sometime in July, is what is anticipated.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Good day.
See you later. Okay, item number three. Janice, thank you for being here in person.
Yeah, I thought I would change it up and come in person.
Mm-hmm.
Good afternoon, Janice Gerso, Director of Behavioral Health for the record. I am here today, Commissioners, to ask for your consideration of a letter of support from Deschutes County Health Services Behavioral Health, supporting a grant application of the City of Bend for the purpose of adding additional resources to the Navigation Center, and in particular with respect to behavioral health funding in the most recent grant application, a 1.0 FTE Behavioral Health Specialist One Case Manager, to be co-located full-time at the Navigation Center to provide behavioral health supports to people served there. That's the short version. Amy is here with me if you have more questions. Right now, this is not a done deal, this is an application that the City of Bend will be submitting, and simply getting your permission to sign a letter of support for that, because if funded, it would involve coming back to the board to ask for additional FTE, so.
One, one sort of high-level question I have, and this, this does relate to the working relationship and coordination between the city and the county, you know, I, I do remember early on in some of the discussions about homeless service provision, the city saying, you know, somebody, a couple people from the city saying, well, you know, Health and Human Services, that's, that's a county function, we don't really do that stuff.
Right.
But meanwhile, we are seeing that, you know, the Navigation Center, the funds are, are being directed to, at least in this case, the City of Bend, and I'm guessing in, in other places to city governments as opposed to county governments, so have we, I guess, how comfortable is the city now in this role of being in Health and Human Services provision, and, you know, do we feel pretty good about kind of the, the kind of level of coordination we've got going, you know, to, to, you know, it's, you know, it would seem through partnerships like this that we've got, that we, the coordination is happening, but like, what, what is the state of that, that division of labor and coordination?
So, well, with your permission, I'd like to invite Amy to come up, because she may be able to be helpful and responsive to that as well, but what I, what I can say, if agreeable to the board, what I can say is that I think there are increasingly, especially in the area of housing, opportunities for overlap, and we've seen it also with law enforcement, we've had some overlap there on other projects in different ways, it's hard when it's human beings to parse who they belong to, they belong to all of us, and so these kinds of projects really give us an opportunity to work together. We are the experts on behavioral health, so it makes a lot of sense for us to hire and house and train and support and supervise a behavioral health position, but this city offering is going to encounter a lot of people that are going to need behavioral health connection, navigation, support, resource, and this kind of a partnership really makes a lot of sense from my perspective, but Amy may want to add to that.
Amy Fraley, Affordable Housing Coordinator from the city, and first, I'd like to say thank you to Janice for being willing to bring the letter forth and have these conversations. I don't speak on behalf of the city, but I will say that this is a terrific opportunity for all of us to work together, and to start to figure out how to provide these services in different settings at different levels, so we greatly appreciate it.
And we've had conversations, as a lot of these housing projects have evolved, about dollars coming from lots of different sources to invest in infrastructure and facilities, and then knowing that any of those facilities are going to be housing people that need services, and as we grow, the opportunity for housing, we also meet, we also will encounter more and more individuals who may need support, so this was a great opportunity to talk about what that looks like on the ground, and how just having in-reach from existing staff may not really meet the service needs of the people that are going to be at the Navigation Center, so.
So the big picture is, we're still going to be in a situation where we have a behavioral health specialist, sitting down person, one-on-one, but we want to get that person to some kind of a service or housing or something, right? I mean, this is, this is going to be a capacity piece, but there's other, a lot more down, downrange.
Yeah, it's, it's probably twofold, it's probably partly that role, that connecting people to resources, navigating and knowing what's out there, making sure that they actually get to the resource that the referral's been made to. The other piece of it is that folks sometimes show up in these environments pretty dysregulated, they may be experiencing symptoms from a mental illness, sometimes staff on site don't feel that they have the training needed to deal with someone who's in a psychiatric crisis. Our case managers can be trained to do initial crisis assessment, they can't do the full-on assessment that enrolls someone in services, but they can provide crisis intervention. So it also makes it possible to have some actual onsite, in the moment, real intervention, reducing the footprint to our crisis teams, and just making sure that staff who are working with clients who may be having difficulty are supported onsite with expertise.
Is this a, a case manager, is that a different term for this person or not? Is that a different position?
A case manager is probably more the description of the work, the classification is a Behavioral Health Specialist One, it's a qualified mental health associate, yeah.
Because, yeah, we're going to have a little bit more of this, and it's good to understand the, the role, and, you know, understanding that.
Yeah.
The FTE name is different than maybe the service also.
Yes.
And I will say that it's the intent to have case managers onsite, too, not at this level, but as part of a treatment team, that's part of Shepherd's House, reach has been very active with Shepherd's House in this location, and we're hoping that that expands as well.
Great.
Well, I'm excited at the idea of, of county behavioral health being, being there and being part of this, this batch, or this web of, of wraparound services. being part of this, this batch or this web of, of wraparound services. Is this position then, would that, would this position be kind of stationed in the homeless outreach team or somewhere else in, in behavioral health?
Well, most likely, although that team has grown significantly and we have new leaders still getting used to a big span of responsibility. So it makes functional sense until the grant funding is actually achieved and we know for certain that someone is coming, I don't know that I'm ready to assign it. It will be connected to our intensive adult services array. So somewhere on one of those teams where there's capacity to supervise.
So, yeah, I'm supportive. This, I'll move a letter of support for the city of Bend's grant application to the Oregon Housing and Community Services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of all chairs?
There we go.
So thank you so much. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Janice. Nice to see you in person.
Yep.
Have a good day. Yes. All right, item number four. I see Peter's stepping up.
Good afternoon, Boyd. Peter Russell, Senior Planner and Planner. Last time I was here before you all, several weeks back, we were just in the early stages of getting our grant accepted for $75,000 from ODOT and DLC's Transportation Growth Management Program, lovingly referred to as TGM. So for the update, as we have signed an IGA with Kittleson and Associates, what they're now doing, I'll brief you in a minute, but first, just because I know it can get really confusing, we've got a lot of balls in the air, so I just basically want to tell you that what I'm working on is the TGM grant, which is to update the bike, pet, and transit sections of the Tumalo Community Plan. But we're also going to begin kicking off fairly soon as an update of the overall, the entire Tumalo Community Plan. We also are updating the transportation system plan currently, and so the work on the Tumalo Community Plan will probably result in amendments to the transportation system plan. We're going, we're in the closing stages of getting ready to start on updating the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan, of which the Tumalo Community Plan is a subset. And then last but not least, the road department is starting work on a wastewater feasibility study on Tumalo. So there's a lot of stuff going in the air, and there's a lot of cross-pollinization, and, you know, staff is serving on several committees that overlap, so that way we'll be able to keep a coherent view on everything that's going. In terms of the team
For clarity, so the transportation system plan, TSP, is countywide.
Correct.
And then this effort is going to be a piece of it. And then the comprehensive plan is countywide also.
Correct.
And this will be part of it for that area.
Yes. So in terms of the team working on the TGM grant, which again is both Tumalo Community Plan and the Rural Trails and Sisters, Karen Swersky from Kittleson Associates, Kittleson and Associates is a project leader, Matt Hasty is involved as a subconsultant, working on the Sisters portion. And then Devin Herring from ODOT is a project manager over there. I've known Karen for 20-plus years and Devin almost as long and worked with him at ODOT, so we're all fairly familiar with working with one another. Also, some of our associates and other senior planners will be involved in this. Nicole Mardell will be assisting, should be taking more of the lead on the Sisters area, but also helping out with Tumalo, as will Tarek Rawlings. He'll be involved with Tumalo, and then Kyle Collins is working on some of our internet magic for it. So that's kind of the, the general. Coming down to the Tumalo Community Plan, TGM grant, and all that other good fun stuff specifically, trying to get a lot of public input. Kittleson is going to have a website for input on that, as is the county. What we're going to do is do a mailer to everyone who's in the boundaries of the Tumalo unincorporated area. That'll go out in a few weeks. We're going to have an online survey that people can put their thoughts to. That'll also include a story map, similar to what we did for the wildfire and wildlife efforts, where you scroll onto a website, it kind of tells a story, and then there's a place to leave questions and contact information so you can be apprised when future meetings will be there. Our first, go ahead.
Another question about clarity. So, yeah, the Tumalo unincorporated community. So there's the, kind of the footprint of the original plat of Tumalo, and then there's the Tumalo at large area. So can you get real clear on what, what that is? Because I know when we talk about, you know, possible future sewer-ing, it needs to be in the, the mapped footprint of the plat.
Correct.
And then, as I say, there's a lot of people right around that area that
So the plat
Sure know they're in Tumalo.
The plat is, is smaller than the boundaries of the Tumalo community, which is a rural unincorporated community under the state's definition. So if you go on our website and click on Tumalo, you can see it, but essentially it goes up Cook Avenue to just about where the Tumalo Road forks off to the east, and then it's on the other side of US 20 portions of it. Ironically, Knife River is not part of the Tumalo community boundary, but other than that, it all kind of encompasses the area. So that's on there. So the plat's in, the, the original Laidlaw plat is part of the Tumalo community
Yep.
Boundary.
But that's just good to know, you know, the, the Laidlaw plat is the, the footprint that we're discussing, you know, if there's local support for sewer, but that is different than the Tumalo community at large.
Yes, the Tumalo, the boundary of the Tumalo community is larger than the Laidlaw plat.
Yep.
And particularly, there's some large rural zone properties on the east side of the river that are in Tumalo, and also some north, as you go up the hill, there are properties there that aren't in the Laidlaw plat, but they're in the Tumalo community.
Right.
Okay. Also, what we're doing is May 11th, we're having an open house. It's the kickoff open house. It'll be in Tumalo at the school. It'll start at 6:00 PM. What Kittleson is doing now is they're working on some of the existing documents that we have, so they're reviewing our existing comp plan, our existing Tumalo Community Plan, our existing TSP. Kittleson's also the firm that's updating our TSP, so again, they have some cross-pollinization in their office, because I know the people who are working on it actually sit adjacent to one another. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have in the process or where we're going next.
I'm looking forward to, yeah, some community outreach meetings and, you know, having citizens get engaged in this, and it is a point in time to be able to think the big picture, what's, you know, what's the future look like? State land use doesn't allow a whole lot of big land use plays there, obviously, but the transportation improvements and, you know, possible utility work that could be done, just there's, there's some moving parts there.
As someone who goes through Tumalo almost on a daily basis, it's, it's really booming. And, you know, there's a new location being built right now for heritage brands, which looks like it's, it's pretty well underway now. So, you know, appreciate what we can do to help with their growth and still, you know, for that sewer plan, I think that's really important that, that we get that going. So, because I know there's some deficiencies there in the community. But it was amazing the other day to see that the elk even came back right up the hill. Yeah, the elk were right there by Bend Equine and, you know, in the middle of April. So they even, I guess, didn't really like the snow. They were like, oh, you know, it's, it's, yeah, it's a great community with a lot of growth.
Right. That's the reason, one of the reasons we're updating the plan is that so much changes since the 2010, 2030 plan. So it was, it was just time to relook at Tumalo, given its, particularly the development on the south side of the highway.
I know the, the restaurants and everything, you know, around the bay are just, it's, it's always such a busy neighborhood community.
Right.
A lot of growth.
Peter, is this an appropriate time to also ask about the Sisters Rural Trails? Or are we just, are we trying to mostly focus on the Tumalo?
No, no.
I mean, I guess to some degree for both, but I, you know, particularly for the Sisters Rural Trails, I was trying to understand whether the work will, will be more about, you know, identifying locations for trails and kind of, and, you know, like high-level conceptualization, or whether the work would be kind of like, more like design or preparing, preparing, you know, getting things teed up for implementation-ready?
So that's a fair question. What we don't want to do, so the Forest Service, which has most of the lands that we're talking about, has gone through an extensive work with the community to come up with some trail plans. And so we're pretty much going to, I won't say plagiarize, but use that, because they've already got the, the hay in the barn. So this is more at the 30,000-foot level, still working with stakeholders up there to see are there any other trails on county land that, you know, you might be interested in. It's more, you know, think of fat dashed lines going on a map or changing some policy language in our bike pit section of the transportation system plan to incorporate, you know, Sisters Rural Trails. But it won't be design level, because obviously, most of these are on federal land, and so they're going to have to go through a NEPA process. So we don't do that. We also have a road department, and we have standards for roads, and we have standards for, you know, some bicycle facilities. We don't have any standards for trails. That's typically more of a park department function or the Forest Service, so we can reference those, but we don't have our own plans. We have worked with the Deschutes County Bike Pit Advisory Committee. They have some suggestions, suggestions of where they want trails in the Sisters area, so we'll see how well that dovetails with what the previous Forest Service effort is, and then go from there. So again, it's kind of, it's more of a 30,000-foot. We can put, you know, big fat lines on a map saying, trail should go somewhere around here, but it's not actually going to be, you know, laid out and doing surveys and, you know, preparation, design work. It's more 30,000-foot and then supportive of policy language or text language.
And the primary value of this process is to then be able to say that they, you know, like many community stakeholders, you know, said, yeah, this is the location that we want?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. They wanted a way to get, you know, from the surrounding rural areas into Sisters and back without necessarily having to write on the shoulder of US 20 or, you know, 126 or something like that.
Worthy goal. That was, that was my, my only question.
Okay.
Well, I guess the, the one other question would be about the, the, the overall TCP meeting. I think you, I think you guys put the date in here.
The May 11th meeting?
The May 11th meeting.
There's a May 3 internal meeting with ODOT, and there's a May 11th meeting with the general public.
Great. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in attending that. I mean, do you, do you think they'll be decent, is it, when we do, when we do community meetings like this, do we, do we typically get a decent turnout, or does it really vary by, from event to event?
It varies wildly. There have, some meetings I've been to where staff outnumbers attendees, and there's other meetings I've been to where if you open a window, somebody falls out. So on this one, we're going to have flyers, we're mailing to everybody in Tumalo. So when I worked with the Redmond School District, I had to, you know, guesstimate how many might attend. I said, well, 50, you know, because that was kind of one of their, if it's more than that, we'll, we'll deal with it. So I, I don't know how many are coming, you know, if those of us who are watching currently, come one, come all, but we'll, we'll see. I'm, I would anticipate it's going to be close to 50, but I'm not, I've been wrong before on these in, in both directions.
And there's no, there's no issues with one or, or multiple of us showing up in terms of publicly noticed meetings and things like that?
I defer to Dave on that question.
I, I'm not sure how you're noticing it, but Sharon can make sure that if more than one of you was planning to attend, that we noticed it.
Yeah, we were just saying generic public meeting. We weren't necessarily saying board meeting
Yeah, so Sharon would need to be more specific. And we could do that, that's not a problem at all.
It's just a general public meeting.
I plan on being there too, yeah, so we already know there'll be
So I can put us down for at least three attending at the meeting.
It could be three, Commissioner.
Well, we could, couldn't we?
Great. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
No, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your debriefing. Okay, other items. I know that we have a leadership event tomorrow morning at 8:30, I believe. Whitney is going to be our coordinator, is that correct?
I will confirm, I, that's not
I, I just asked Sharon on the way down, and she told me that Whitney was, I said, yes, who is, who's coordinating this?
I will confirm.
Okay, great.
I'll, I'll, I will plan on dialing into the Eastern Oregon Caucus call tomorrow.
It's your turn?
Yep.
Great. And Thursday, we had a really good COAC meeting, and it seemed to be quite impactful, the, the message given from Charlie Avery, who runs a trucking company, the problems that truckers have. And so I just spoke to Jared Puckett, who is, is responsible for the minutes, and he's going to put together those minutes. And then what Charlie was sharing, it was frightening. I mean, it's like, no wonder we have such a trucky, truck industry shortage, and how they're on electronic monitors and, you know, they only can work so many hours, and if they're like 20 minutes from home, they still can't finish their job that day. So Charlie gave a lot of, I thought, really incredibly valuable insight, a lot of places where they used to build the stop and park, like on 84 at, at the John, John Day Dam. That area had been taken, removed, that's no longer allowed for truckers, because it was actually owned by some military people, and there was too much vandalism going on there. So anyway, I thought it was really important that we pass our, our minutes on to people and Jared said I'll have by next week to share. So, yeah, it's really, it's quite, it's a, quite an impacted industry.
I'll just share that this week, we're doing, I'll be, I'll work with leadership over at Solid Waste to do the interviews for the two finalists for the landfill gas utilization project. And, you know, the, the teams are, you know, basically the two teams that are, will be presenting are Northwest Natural Gas and Amoresco and Cascade Natural Gas and, and their engineering partner, which I'm, I can tell you who that is. Actually, it doesn't, doesn't say. They have, it's a, it's a, it's a similar kind of package where there's the natural gas utility plus an engineering firm that's working with them.
So both finalists are cleaning the gas to be put in pipeline? Is that the idea?
Um.
I mean, is that obvious at this time, or?
They, they, both finalists as natural gas utilities have requirements for bringing a certain amount of renewable natural gas online. And there were other proposers in the pool who occupied a different role, which was more, I, I'm not an expert in this stuff, but I, the way I would describe it is, you know, the, with economics based more on like green energy tags and credits and monetizing those than about the requirement, their requirements to bring, you know, put renewable natural gas in the pipe, in the system. But these two utility-based proposals were a lot less speculative in terms of the economics and, you know, a little bit more predictable and stable, and that was one of the attractions for, for, for going with these, these top two.
Great. Looking forward to seeing it.
Yeah.
And I heard today was our new director's first day on the job?
Yes.
Yes. So, thank you very much for joining us. Apparently, he's already amazed about how we can have four seasons in one day. Welcome to Central Oregon. Whitney, I mentioned your name, I hope I wasn't incorrect.
Do you mind if I?
No, please join us. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Nader. You're correct, the board has Leadership Redmond tomorrow with the Leadership Redmond class. And I think, based on the initial email that came through, my understanding was that the program wasn't necessarily looking for a formal presentation from the board, although we're certainly happy to provide that if that's the direction we want to go. I think it was more about introductions, about why you ran for office, and kind of your experience in the, in the role was more the focus, so a little bit more of a personal touch there, but certainly staff's happy to support you with whatever is helpful for that presentation tomorrow. So just, I don't know if there's
Could we be in this room?
That is my understanding.
Barnes and Sawyer?
Yep, it looks like Barnes and Sawyer, right at 8:30.
So maybe just the org chart that we use for other presentations, you know, we don't need a lot of slides, but something like that'd be fun, because
Okay.
And point to it.
So maybe just, we'll do a really high-level slide deck with the three photos, org chart that follows, and anything else the board may find helpful or want to see in terms of talking about the position of county commissioner and the role of the county.
The Solid Waste slide, if we, you know, which we've had recently, just because I like promoting that, because it's such a serious business, you know, getting the next one cited, just so people are up to speed on it. But those are all canned slides, I think we have already.
Any other requests for
Fire Free.
Okay.
Sure, there we go. Oh, we're creating a slide deck.
There we go.
Well, I mean, it's too close to Fire Free
Yeah.
To talk about it, truly. We've got to be ready.
We're ready to go at our house, so
Well, good! Do you have your go-bag and all that other?
More, we've been raking a lot, but yes.
I know.
If, if they were looking for a little bit more informal and more question, opportunity to do question and answer, I would just, I'm glad that we're not doing, we're not trying to do the standard PowerPoint, because as we saw with our leadership end presentation, to do the standard PowerPoint, because as we saw with our leadership end presentation, we end up running really long, and then nobody gets a chance to answer any questions, so, or ask any questions.
Great.
I'll tee up a question slide, and then in terms of, we'll make sure the room is set up for you, and I'll probably leave a clicker up front, and if we're staff will be available to support if there's any AV questions, but I think it should be fairly straightforward for tomorrow.
Great. Thank you. We could have a, are we having a blizzard tonight? Do we, anything happening?
Anything is possible. I think I saw rain. Have you, rain? Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, you never know, do you?
Keep coming.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Whitney. Thank you so much for telling us that it's going to be personal touch. Are there any other items? Do you have anything?
Well, Chair Rendere, you mentioned it earlier, so let me just provide the dates for Fire Free, because it's just right around the corner. How important it is, recycle your needles, leaves, branches, and brush for free. So here are the dates, for those who may be listening, in Bend, not landfill, April 30th to May 15th, so it's coming right up. Seven days a week, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. In Redmond, the transfer station, May 21st to June 4th, Monday through Saturday, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. In Sisters, at the Northwest Transfer Station, May 21st to June 4th, Wednesdays through Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. In Le Pine, the Southwest Transfer Station, May 21st to June 4th, Wednesday through Saturday as well, also 8:00 to 4:00. And finally, Sun River, the Sun River Compost Site, two days, May 6th and 7th, from 8:00 to 4:00. So there are the days for, the dates for Fire Free for 2022.
Oh, thank you for, thank you for all those, because, gosh, it's starting April.
Right up, it's right around the corner.
That's great to know. Have we done a new press release on it?
I will, I will check with Ed and Chad and see if they've coordinated, and I will ask them.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, it was really wonderful what Ed did down in China Hut as far as educating the neighbors, and it's always important to take a look at your property with a fresh eye, because things do grow. Anything else?
Nothing else.
Are we, we're no executive today, so we are ready to adjourn, which actually...